All right, we're going to leave the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, now we're open, officially open for business. Speaking, I'll let you start with board business. Minutes? Do they have any issue with the minutes?
Mine, the two typos are two small things that I said. Looks fine.
Okay, there's three of us.
I moved to second.
All in favor? I did the mail already, bills.
Thank you.
Six seventy-one Gray Road.
This was the carpet store that's being done.
All right.
Your favorite.
Aren't they coming for something or no?
No.
Nope, that's it?
That's it, they've made the changes on the plans.
All right. We're just going to sign two sets and?
Yeah. Can they give you a small version of that in your packet?
I have a small one.
In here.
Wasn't this, weren't they supposed to have Roland look at these buildings, make sure that they're all up to code, all that other stuff? Is that in? That was one of the things they were supposed to do.
That's one of the conditions, but we don't know if they've done it yet.
Right.
And where are those conditions that they're?
On the site plan approval and that discussion would have been in the minutes from that meeting.
It was one of the conditions.
Yeah. And then the only new mail was we got an invitation to a stormwater workshop.
That's it. Just in time.
What's the old expression, society always arrives late?
I was always said if you miss the opening kickoff, you might as well stay home.
We weren't holding up anybody, Ian.
So anyway, I was just pointing out the additional mail, the water department is tied into a grant and grant funds will help put this workshop on for board members.
So is there a date?
Yeah, I just, Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:30 in North Chelmsford at the senior center.
Okay, and that's in the new agenda, which sounds awesome.
She just handed it out.
And I also forward it to you.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen it yet.
Yep.
All right, we have a 7:35 A and R.
So you're saying this is open and we can just show up, we register.
It says RSVP and there's an email address or a phone number.
All right, you can have that.
Okay.
It's all right, we have a 7:35 A and R for Sarah Indian Way slash Boathouse Way, Land Swap. Is that, you gentlemen, you want to come up and kind of walk us through it a little bit?
You have copies?
I think we have the little copies.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I purchased lots on A and R.
I'm sorry, who are you?
I am Matt Greer, sorry.
Okay.
And I purchased lots on A and R to build a home in Acton on the side where protest had been approved and the site was approved. Tim Roberts owns 22B with his wife and?
Where it's split from, that's where it's split from.
There are two separate lots currently, a house on 22B, the show on my house.
Okay, there.
Yep.
He wants it here and the car in the lot is there, so my brother's going up here, he's got the same square footage on each side, which wants it straight in line, I'll fix it.
Sure. And you have this, right?
I have this in the house, the outside, the new outside is here. What happened is this landed not per the outside.
Correct.
And Littleton, so it's not available, so we figured that it would be advantageous to have more than closer to our homes.
And just having looked at, yeah, it's a little bit confusing because the addresses and all those, so this is the street number for what's here?
This is Sixth Boathouse Way.
Right, right.
For this boathouse, which is a, this is not a, it's just a shed.
So you're going to access it from Uta Road?
That's right.
In Acton?
In Acton.
So just to understand, I realize it's a say in R, but understand, you know, some private roads here and that this is a paper road and?
This is a, this is part of a 15 unit association.
Right.
That shares access and reviews for these roads.
And the access in is through Sarah Indian right away, then down here perhaps?
We'll put Sarah Indian's here and four condos over here.
Right.
Yeah.
And just to understand better, okay, it's a paper road, but your house is going to be, yeah, right, okay.
And the driveway after comes out.
Okay, so you have to figure some way to deal with the weapons for that.
That's already been done in Acton, so that's already, the driveway is across the weapons.
So which one is?
It's this.
Yeah, Acton has approved this portion, I think assigned to Mylar, and so now we're looking for your approval of that stuff.
Yes, confusing, configuration.
Yeah.
It's always confusing because they're private roads and it's not even G I S and stuff like that. Okay.
You have any questions, Donna, Richard?
Will you be building the house here?
There's nothing being built in Acton.
On the other, on the other side?
On Acton's side, yes, here's a house.
You're just straightening out the lot lines.
Yeah, assume that the lot lines are just the way they are because that was the original place for the house would have been.
Yeah, yeah. All right, that's, I'm fine with this.
It seems to be a long issue.
Yeah.
It's confusing, but okay.
I'll close again, I want to stand motion to go to the lines there.
Sure.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Where is, what about Wade?
There are other access routes, not just part of the 15 mile system.
I was just curious, what is the association that's there at various times?
It's called Kimball Shores.
Kimball Shores. Does the town of Acton only allow one person to sign?
Actually, they allow the town manager to sign.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just checking.
No, it means.
For A and Rs only, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Do one of them sign Mylar or just, I mean, the paper or the guy?
You'd have to do a couple copies, I think, that'd be great.
Yeah, but they're not signed by Acton.
They're not, the plan was to, the plan was to make copies of.
Do you want to send mylar?
Copies of the Mylar.
That's fine, that'd be great.
Did you sign the Mylar?
So it seems to be a family co-队, I know it's a four condo association.
There is, yeah.
We have collectives and have a community, somebody from Plaza Road, and it's starting to turn over because originally, they're all original owners, it seems, so some of them are, some of them are starting to get on here, so they're doing some turnover recently. I just bought the property in May last year.
And the other side was also transferred.
And, um, do you need, and just trying to find it.
So we didn't go to the secretary, yeah.
Okay, Tim Long.
And Matt Greer.
Oh, okay, great. And even Charlotte, father of, yeah, you have their seasonal colleges for those who are turning older too.
So I think it was a early 70s subdivision, so that kind of puts it in the, you know, the 40 year, young families buying it and either not finding a relative to transfer it to.
Although sometimes it goes down with families.
It sometimes does, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Can you hold it back for a moment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your, for your time.
We have a 7:40 circular modification, building age, lots, everything.
The last minute, I'm trying to go high tech, but I couldn't get all these images, so we're going to have half and half. High tech and the old fashioned. It's called the transitional phase. Oh, now you're beginning to get it. The pink roofs, some clavering, some tucko.
He's got some new drawings to show you.
Yeah, still a long history. Are these newer than these?
Yeah.
Okay, good. You know, it's nice when you mention something to somebody and they come back and they respond to it.
I haven't seen it yet.
You don't, what do you notice, I do.
Yeah.
I don't know what you have on the wall.
I have like some sites.
What's your first name again?
Tim.
Tim.
Tim Power.
Yeah.
I work with Sam.
Yeah.
So I'm especially from land strategies, but a project manager for the development of the whole. Phil Cudero is here as well as a civil engineer and representative directly for TMI, but, so, I guess the last time we were here, we presented the building and the elevation and the rendering and, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't received very well, so some requests were made, so we actually.
You seem very kind to us.
Thank you. We, we sort of went to work with TMI directly to really try to bring the hotel into the point and fit it in to Littleton and what we're trying to do here. It was a little bit challenging and actually unfortunately Sam had a vacation in the middle, so we really had a big push in the last week to get it all together. Sam may appear, he actually was with bringing some kids to college, so he may show up a little bit late, but until then, I'll try to get us through what we have for the plan. So what I wanted to do is sort of go back to the design process that we went to because we had a couple things to work with, to work around based on comments you gave us and whatnot. You know, the general feeling was that it was kind of flat, it had some very yellow tones that maybe didn't match, you know, what we were doing at the point. You wanted to see some additional views, you know, obviously the important view is at the front, where the front of the building is going to be, but then also how it reads from the center. I think that was a comment that came from the board, so they read together. So I guess I'm going to show you the newer ones, I can see that you're looking at a little bit older one. That's my daughter, that's my daughter, so, so it's a little bit, what we decided when we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, is really what the intent was of this center. And if you recall, we'd always seem to talk about blending the old and the new, the, you know, the, we have this tech corridor with new, you know, employees and high tech companies around that we're trying to cater to. At the same time, you know, it's very important to meet the Littleton traditional history of the, of the, of the town. So we're, we're now looking at this, you know, incorporating the hotel as, as part of the whole center and not just standalone. And the original conversation was always that we had on some of the larger buildings, we were going to try to incorporate that techy feel to feed into, you know, service those tech companies in the area. While this center core of the development was the village center, and I actually, I did dig up one of the even original renderings where you can see that even a little more. So, you know, these bigger buildings, which lend themselves to flat roofs anyway, try to get a more techy, trendy design, and then the village sort of appears in the middle. But even at one point, this was sort of a, you know, maybe a small retail and a techy office building pitch, so we did advance that, obviously, to what picture you've seen many times, which we're still, you know, this is what we're moving forward now, the hotel is off this picture now, but, so, the point is, is that this building, we feel because of the massing and the size of the building, fits with more of the techy role. The hotel as a use actually wants to serve more of IBM and the surrounding tech companies, so we're again trying to cater to that. So we did look at, as you had in front of you, you had the one with the top hats, but we felt it was even getting a little bit contrived with the size of the building and not quite there. So we sort of, we, you know, we pulled back from there to this.
Is that where the helicopters are going to land?
What's that?
On the flat roofs?
On the flat roofs, yeah. So this is where we are, but let me tell you really what's done, is we've really tried to get away from, I'm going to put this up slightly.
You know, you did a nice job, but my first look at it, the problem I had with it is, you don't have enough windows in it, there's not enough glass.
Yeah, this, this.
It's all block.
Yeah, this one too, I think.
If you look at the side of this building, it breaks it up and makes it look halfway decent, is the doorways. This here in the front, you've got no glass. This is your lobby, right? How come there's no glass over here?
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things we're still kind of, kind of working with. So let me hold that thought for one second, and what we're, because I wanted to show you what, at least we improved, right? We tried to get rid of the flatness by both, you know, exaggerating some of these ins and outs that we had, doing a little more color contrasting across the front and, you know, changing materials. So there wasn't this flat, big, huge building, at least it breaks it up along the way.
You did group there.
So that was the trying. We are trying to bring it down to pedestrian level, you know, your point here for the glass in the lobby is well taken, something we're trying to, the detail we're trying to work out on final window penetrations. If you look at the side one I have up on the screen as well, you can see that we've, this elevation at first, there was really only a door in the middle of the, of these sort of end towers, when we started with the bare bones, right? It was just this door. And we, you know, we talked and worked with them because this faces the center, so we've adding windows here, we're adding a canopy at a pedestrian level, we're going to incorporate a trellis, you know, so as this feels, this is sort of the pedestrian feel on the building.
That makes, that makes all the difference in the world.
Yeah.
And that's what you need to do on the front, too.
Missing the, now will we be seeing stone-like material at the bottom, because I think that's a terrific, yeah, change.
Yes, and this, I mean, there's always.
As opposed to brick.
Yes, so, and this, this is meant to match, you know, what the stonework we're using on the point, even the original, or the rest of the point, because this is also the point, but the original one was more of a yellow tone stone, might have been something that they have on their basic rendering. So we, I don't know if this rendering does it justice, but we're meant to get the gray tone that we have, and they're happy to work with us once we get the final spec on the stone and the final spec on the colors, like this gray may match, you know, the exact gray on some of the buildings at the end of the day that you see, you know, in here, right? Some of these gray tones, so.
Nice, yeah.
They'll at least complement, you know, we, we weren't quite at that phase, we're actually hoping to get very soon the actual, you know, colored rendering of the construction level of these buildings.
Yep.
So once we get that, we can pass it on to TMI as well, so.
I think you did a great job with dealing with a square building that, to make it look interesting and to blend it in, it's just you lose it on the first floor between no windows, you put some trees in and it kind of dresses it up a little bit, but the fact is, it looks so bland without the windows.
And inside, I think, you would also want, you know.
Yeah.
Only from outside, I mean, once again, this is the thing that is going to be sort of the visual logo of what's there, either to annoy people or turn people off.
This will, this will be the first, almost the first thing you see. I liked the pink roofs. This is, that's a, that's an element that we have all over town, this pink roof, not the flat roof.
Well, but this doesn't look like stuff in town either because they're oversized and.
That was, that was what we were struggling with, honestly, that, it came across and we looked at it and said, I think we're forcing it, so.
Yeah.
That's why we went back to that feel of, you know, we have this, this sort of tech, elements of this that are tech and a little more contemporary, but then really focus, it gives more focus to the village center.
What happens if you have no outside? You have no outside.
No, no, no.
So like.
The overhangs are definitely, yeah, the soffits are definitely good. Yeah, so I guess I'm happy to discuss a little more, but there's two things that I wanted to highlight that I guess we're looking for, and I checked with my attorney to make sure I asked it in the right way, so I understand, so we're not on space here because we want TMI to move forward, and, you know, at this point, they, they've done some work, but they want to start to get into the real architecture, you know, this is someone doing sort of conceptual renderings, so, but there's a little bit of an open loop here for us. So two of the things are, and there's sort of different issues that we can address separately if needed, but one is the site plan approval, which is really the horizontal stuff that, you know, there's no material change that creates, makes it inconsistent with the original approval. And I think even at the last meeting, we sort of mentioned that, that it all fits, the circulation fits, we had input from all the different departments and whatnot. So that's one bucket over there. The next one is that, you know, that we, we verify that the massing and, you know, the way that this is going is again consistent with your prior approvals of the point in itself, and, you know, if that has to be subject to a final review of our architectural plan, I think we're okay with that, but I think that's, you know, we want to get those two things identified. And, you know, like I said, the final, you know, window locations on the ground, finestrations, this on the, from the side view here, you know, are details to be worked out, we have to balance some of this with the Hilton prototype and how that works, so.
Could you, could you restate the second part you're looking for, because I was a bit short on my phone.
Yes, to verify that the massing, I actually have it written here, verify that the massing and overall building intent is consistent with the, the design intent of the current site, special permit.
You need an affirmation for us that in order to keep me forward.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But looking at the draft that's before us and looking at what had been submitted, I saw I had problems with the design part, so I don't know if that overlaps with that second part.
Well, he just said, subject to a final design.
I mean, the first part as opposed to the second part in conclusion of the third part was, the first part will be okay, as long as the second part is in line with it.
Who's on first?
I'm just curious.
First of all, we have to agree that this. First of all, we have to agree that this fits with the point.
I think the color scheme?
No, 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 the size of it.
The size, yeah.
The flow and everything else, and we talked about it in the first meeting, right?
I'm absolutely fine with that.
I have no problem.
And the issue, you know, looking at this stuff, looking carefully and noticing that this also doesn't fit anything in town, I started looking around, looked at what's there in the point. Now, coloration may fit in.
That's the second part.
No, okay, but the, well, okay, the first-
Let's go by the first part. First part is, it's in the scale, it fits within-
The envelope.
The envelope, it fits within the scale, the size, and the intent of what we always know was going to go in there. They want to, we, you want us to vote and reaffirm that we're okay with going forward, but the hotel is part of that component on what, what is it?
Seven.
I thought we did that last meeting.
We didn't.
Because we did something partial.
Oh, well, that's why, I know it was mentioned to discuss, but I think it was, well, we weren't totally clear if that was, that piece was put together.
If you had to put together a motion, what would that motion say?
A motion that the, the site plan has no material changes that are inconsistent with the original approval.
I would move to, to-
Well, we need to-
How do you define that?
We need to focus on the fact that the site plan, including the hotel, which is proposed to be a homewood suite, is, is consistent with the original site plan that was approved when we approved everything else. It was always intended to be a component, now we're affirming that it is in fact a component of that site plan.
Yes, and that's a little more focused on the horizontal.
Correct.
The footprint, yes. I would move to approve that.
Did you get all of that, or how, something close to it? Okay, so, move second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I, yeah, that, okay.
Okay, so now let's go back to the, the architectural integrity of what we're trying to get out there.
Yes.
I think we can leave it open until we get to the very end. We like the concept, we like the idea moving forward. We would like, I've got to be honest, we would rather you, your office or Sam's office, continue working to get this to look closer to what's in the point there. This is the, this faces constitutional way, right? This is the front door.
Yeah, that's, this one that faces, I mean, this, this one faces out over the wetlands, and that one is what faces the rest of the center, so when you're there, that's really-
He used it for four nine five.
It still has that Costco kind of look, though, we'd like it a little more in keeping with what you're trying to do with the point. I guess that's the best way to say it.
But Mark, the ins and outs, and the, and the ups and downs and the variation of colors, and the material, the stone material, I think all of that is, is great.
I agree, Richard.
I think you hit it.
I think they've done a great job, I don't think it's done yet, I think it's the fact that there's not enough windows in it.
Sure, that could be.
Is this a, is this a building that they've previously built in numerous other sites and you're just going to try and make it fit here?
Um-
It's not a redesign for this place, is it?
The, I think the side, the materials that you see here are somewhat redesigned, we're going a little bit outside what they typically like to do.
I mean, the footprint.
But the footprint, the footprint is typical, but depending on where we need some windows, that might change the interior, but footprint is-
I think what you need to go back to-
They're trying to make that footprint fit here and the exterior of previous ones be the same thing.
Yeah, but we want it a little more like the point, we want it a little more upscale. This is cookie cutter, what you see everywhere else. The point is going to be special in the town of Littleton. Sam's done a great job, I think we're relying more on Sam's vision as expertise than the Homewood Suites peoples.
But how do you think they could get there? Because they've got the, they've got the ins and outs and the variation.
I think more windows.
One second. I think the drawing they had earlier of the mushroom caps, as we call it, you know, the hip roofs everywhere, that looks foolish. If you put four gables up there, that would look a hell of a lot nicer on it with a decent look of window, a Palladian, something elliptical, something up there in the peak of it would look a lot nicer. See, that's, that's the only really thing that bothers me, is that the flats. Not so tall above the other ones. Break that up with, with some peaks, very similar to what you have in the, in the middle of the, I think that would be it.
I was curious, you know, you're presenting this to us, but you're not the decision-maker. Where are the decisions being made for this? I mean, you know, it's coming down through people, you know, confident in what you do and so on, but you're not calling the shots on this, and it's right, who is calling the shots? You know, you're almost sort of messengers, maybe high-level messengers, and this isn't to, to produce what you do and your abilities and so on, but you're not the decision-makers. It's sort of being relayed.
So I guess at the very end of the day, there's, there's two. TMI Hospitality will be the owner-operator, but then we also have Hilton, who blessed the Homewood Suites, any Homewood Suites flag as well. And then layered into there, as part of the arrangement with TMI, we have a certain level of design approval. So even though, you know, Hilton and TMI have to pull the trigger and pay the bills in the day, we also have a, have some influence there as well. Sam himself has some influence there.
So why don't we leave it like this? You come back with a couple more additions, just coming back with one, maybe listen to what we had to say, so we can look at different roof layouts, look at different window configurations on the bottom, and give us a final bite at what we like. We like the concept, we like the footprint, we like, we'd much like to go ahead, we're just not 100% there with the layout of the building, we're, we're close.
I like, I like, I think what Mark's saying is, we like the colors, we like the different materials that are on there too, we like the ins and outs, but if you, if you do some work on the roofs, maybe add some more-
And some more windows.
-infiltration.
Yeah, I have some comments to make, Richard's given a bit of opinion quite a bit. I think this is better than what we've seen previously, you know, there's no packets, I thought that was sort of a failure too, with sort of like the previous one. And also there's nothing in town with that sort of basis. Likewise for this, but it does blend in more of this type of stonework, and it's almost like a basement and it's, you know, I drove around and looked at things, I looked at what we could see at the point without going on site, and thought it wasn't really well-integrated once in the point. Now, they do have, I guess, Mark, a basket of red brick and claverts.
Right.
Which just a claverts, this has a little bit of claverts, but not a whole lot, and it still looks like the urban landscapes are pushed together. I agree, it needs more windows to make it more appealing outside and inside, but yeah, it is sort of funny with this overhanging eaves, I mean, it just doesn't really look natural, I mean, in all these cases it's been there, but it sort of looks strange. But I did go through the notes of last meeting, and we suggested go out and look at what's in the community, and more claverts and so on, but it, well, it does seem to have that point.
They did that.
They've done a little bit of-
Well, it's, it's been approved, but-
Rather than Beeta Day was, why don't you let Sam and your office kind of work on getting it closer to the point.
I think Beeta had a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe gables make sense, and why, what did you see in town? Because once again, it's different.
This is a question-
I mean, this is almost like-
No, this is the first, this is the first hotel in the town of Littleton, so we're going to give you a bit of leeway, because we've never had anything like this before, but we want to-
We had it at Roslyn.
If you had an ice cream stand out front, give me golden, okay. So why don't we just leave it like this? We're going to rely on your offices, you did a great job at the point, we'd like you to integrate more with the point. We still know that you're looking at a technical IBM car thing, but we'd like to see it a little closer, resemble the point a little more.
What is, what is your mind print for all this? Because we don't meet again for another month. Do you need the decision on, would you have another rendering sooner than that?
Uh, I guess I'm trying to see, think how fast we can, we can turn one around, I mean, we probably could, we know we have conservation.
They need next with conservation on the 28th.
So a month is not going to make a big difference to you anyway.
I don't think so, is that one extra week after, I don't know where the calendar lands, if it's one extra week after.
Well, when is, when is your next meeting?
10.
May 10?
Eight.
Yeah, so it's one, so a month. Some of my feelings was like, okay, this is the next time we see it, it's a whole month, you know, it's going to be different additions, it's going to take a while, so. Unless you bring a couple different options.
If we needed to, we could, we could schedule a special meeting to just be in and out for something like this.
Don't really need to, I mean, you're, you've got enough stuff, you've gotten your macho orders to go forward.
Yep.
Is the, is the fact that we haven't nailed down the final design going to hold you up for a month?
I'm worried it may a little bit, because, only because I think they are waiting for, I think, a little more than you're, than you're telling people to have to release their full architecture team.
Okay.
But I think that I think-
If you need a meeting, you call us, we'll come, we'll have a meeting before.
And just my, my final thing is what Mark had upon, I look at this, is that, okay, the point was sold as something special, higher-scale development, a lot of money has gone into widening the road, a lot of people, citizens around there say, okay, they're taking a hit because of the new development, so people are expecting a little bit more, and I had sort of the feeling that, okay, maybe someone's just throwing this at us and various things, and it may need more refinement and a little more attention than a standard hotel might get plunked down someplace else.
True.
If you want to have a meeting with everybody, we can, we can accommodate you in a couple weeks.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think you'll find, you know, me personally, not, not any issue with the ins and outs, so the footprint and the shape, I think you're right.
I think that's wrong.
Yeah, the, the general massing and, yeah, ins and outs.
Okay, and let us know, and we'll make ourselves available if we need to.
Yeah, okay, well, that's great.
Thank you.
Tim, thank you.
We done, we're going home now?
Sam owes you a raise. Sam owes you a raise.
Is that on the record?
They did a very good job.
All right, right back on schedule, like we never left it. Eight o'clock, public hearing, 37 Air Road.
Are you reasonable?
Yes.
And I assume the 8:15 is continuing?
Um, yeah, we have to open the door.
Did you admire the plan?
I thought it was a good one.
You know what the valley is called out on the other side of Big Sky?
The valley?
Yeah, it's called the, Big Sky, Montana, the mountain range, that's on the next part of the road. A little balanced, Paul.
Great basin.
It's a little squishy, right?
It's out there somewhere.
Okay.
It isn't necessarily a valley.
I'll be ready.
Sure.
All right. Public hearing, Aquifer District Special Permit, 378 Air Road. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 10, 2014, at 8:00 PM, Room 103 of the Shattuck Street School, Shattuck Street Town Hall, to consider the application for a special permit pursuant to Master of Law Chapter 48 and the Code of the Town of Littleton Zoning, Aquifer and Water Resource District. The property location is 37 Air Road, Justice Map 246, Castle 3.2. Application, Brian Commercial Property. The application is for an Aquifer District Special Permit to allow an increase in impervious cover for a site with over 15 impervious within the Aquifer District. Application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's Office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated by the proud clerk. Let this show begin.
Thank you, with your permission, I'll, I'll begin for the record. My name's Greg Roy with Ducharme and Dulles. I was before you about two months ago with the same site, where you put before you a request to modify the site plan for the construction of an outdoor storage pad, if you recall, that was back in February. We are here this morning, to, as, as was, as was read, to, to seek a special permit to construct a parking area for the storage of vehicles within this, within this area. The tenant has now identified the need to have vehicles in there, which was a, we were not permitted to do that as part of your site plan modification, so we are here this evening to request that. We have prepared the, the site plan for you, we did have a, since the initial, my client, the owner of the building, was working back and forth with the tenant to identify the, the exact configuration of that parking area, so I do have a slight modification. I believe your point is that you're holding part of the, of the impervious ones. So as stated in the, in the narrative there, we are in excess of 15% impervious. We actually, with the addition of the approximately 14,000 square foot of paved area, it brings the site to 24% impervious, just over 24%, 24.2, I believe. When we came before you two months ago, we had proposed modifications to the drainage to accommodate the, the difference in drainage patterns, which was going to be done entirely in this area. With the addition of the pavement now, we have a need to do some further drainage improvements on the site. One of them, and most importantly, is to, is to collect all of the runoff that would be associated with this parking area and run it through an oil grease grit separator, so we pre-treat this, because we are in an Aquifer District, that's one of the, one of the stipulations in your bylaw. We are proposing to do that right here, and then we are proposing a new infiltration area, which is very similar in function, actually exactly similar in function to the existing one that we have on-site here. We're going to be taking advantage of an existing naturalized lower area there and just expanding it slightly to accommodate recharge to the site.
So you're-
No one likes to hear engineers, so I'll, I'll stop with that.
No, no, just so the public knows where this site is, this is right next to the Light and Water Department on the east side.
The highway department's right here.
Highway department, right where your hand is.
Do you have a plan with a, that shows a bigger area that shows this and the other buildings?
I don't.
All right, so where's the map?
The highway garage bays are literally right here.
Yeah, so this is actually in behind the Main Street building that you see from the street.
Correct, yes, sir.
Not even close to-
So where's the parking for this?
For the building? That's all in this area here, around the building.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're not proposing to touch that at all.
So the pad is purely for storage?
Yeah, well, the, the intent, when we came before you two months ago, was that it was purely for storage of, the, the company that's, that's utilizing that area is a wire contractor, so they store schools of wire, very similar to what's stored in the back of the light They have the need to store some trucks and equipment there.
Will there be any coverage, any shed type assembly or anything?
No.
And how many vehicles are there?
They have, they have six crews, they have, there'll be, there'll be a truck, the toes trailer and a mini excavator type apparatus per crew with a support truck. So they have 12 trucks and six excavators.
Okay, do we have a limit on the amount of-
I believe the limit's like 100 vehicles or something like that, I think, is the, the upper in your bylaw.
That would just be the trigger for another Aquifer District Special Permit.
Right. How many vehicles you actually think you're going to park on that?
So we're, we're looking at, for their equipment, there'll be 18, roughly 18 to 20 vehicles. When the crews show up in the, in the, at the beginning of the day, they'll have their vehicles, so they'll be parking their vehicles here and then taking off with the equipment, so there'll be a swerve.
So is it sort of like Light and Water Department, is it fixing cobalines and things like that?
Yeah, they, they, they're a cable contractor, so they'll, I think, you know, I, I, my understanding is they work a lot for Comcast and Verizon and this-
So it's no difference in what's being done on High Street.
That's correct.
Now, you have, you show, in this drawing, it's different than that one, you show the stone infiltration trench around the perimeter.
Yeah, we still have that, that's still here, right there. We're not proposing to change that in any way.
And that captures, that captures runoff and diverts it into the, into the tank or into the-
That diverts, that diverts into this area. So now that we're putting this pad in there, we're going to be taking this runoff from the pad.
Yeah.
It will not, the runoff from this area will now not flow directly into the infiltration trench.
I see the berm, you've got a significant berm around that parking area.
Yeah, and that's just to make sure we don't, we don't want any.
All the, all the water falls and that parking area is going to go through that special tank.
Correct.
I have no issue with it.
I think they've done a great job.
One question I have is oil, gas filters and so on. There are two issues. One's the sign that, assume this is the news and I see the water department has muted. The second is really the maintenance, because sometimes the maintenance is down.
Right. We have submitted now an updated drainage calculation as an operation maintenance plan in it.
Well, we'll have that in our conditions.
And that was one of the things we were waiting for.
Yeah, and that's, I apologize for the untimely nature of that signal, but it's one of the things I dropped off this evening.
And just sort of curious on how it works. I mean, how do you make sure it isn't just paperwork and gets?
Well, I would imagine that this board would have a condition of their approval. I'm not sure how you folks would choose to do that, but I believe we're suggesting an annual pumping of that, of that, twice annual inspection, once annual pumping unless it needs more. I'm not sure if there's a document trail that you folks would require, if you need to see the pumping record, for example.
That'd be part of it.
And I don't know, some boards have been on, have requests of that.
Yeah, I mean, it varies from board to board, really. I'm not sure what your?
That would definitely be a part of it. Regular peaking and maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, they certainly need to be maintained.
Right, I mean, having maintained is the issue.
We can do that aside. Do you want to have a super?
I'm good with that.
Are the approval laws and witnesses these act being completed?
Parking, careful parking.
In the old days, when we had Debbie Brad, the water department, she used to pretty much watch it all.
Now there's a new water guy, new environment, yeah.
God, for the person who wrote this, and he was fired.
So we'll make it subject to the water department.
Right, yeah, I think that's the book.
Right, and that piece is enforceable by Rowland if it's in the site plan decision or in the special permit decision, so make him do it.
Are we good to close this?
Except for one question. You came here two months ago and said, no, we're never going to pay back there. We don't want to do any, so never is now.
Never's now, sorry. Yes, and, you know, there was a, there was a miscommunication between tenant, owner, and me. And I'm the guy that has to stand up here and do it again, so I apologize.
Do we get any more money out of them, Mark?
We did.
Pay for the?
Well, I want, I.
Wait, wait, how many parking spaces are you adding?
They're not adding any parking.
They're caving, now caving, oh, they're parking there.
Yeah, so we have, we need eighteen vehicles. The intent of that is here.
Eighteen vehicles, which are going to be parked there overnight, full-time, dripping and doing their things. And then during the day, minimum of, say, eighteen, because there's more than one guy in each truck. So eighteen other vehicles are coming unless they carpool.
Right.
So now we're talking thirty-six spaces, minimum?
Yeah, but I don't think.
And those are added in pavement parking spaces, is that right, Mary?
No, the building must have had parking for it.
But they've added parking spaces.
They're adding storage spaces.
They're adding parking spaces, they're parking vehicles overnight.
Right, right.
Now, I'm not going to nickel-dime you in some respects, but then again, I might, because it's a hundred and ten dollars a parking space that goes to the town's coffers, correct?
Maybe not in this situation.
I'm just wondering.
Sure.
Because, because two months ago, someone said, never to me, so now I'm going to have a question.
That would be a lot worse if parking.
If he's determined.
I would think that the.
It would be calculated as follows.
I mean, our business, our corporate trucks are registered in the town of Oklahoma.
Just like all the sandbags. It's supposed to be raised as well.
Well, it looks like it says that they're looking at this hundred dollar fine to me, or not fine, I didn't mean fine, I meant fee. So I think I'm, I'm just running that by you, just to let you know that I like to see the coffers grow a little bit, that my taxes are going.
Well, if we owe a fee, we'll be certain to pay.
What do you think?
It's compliance.
Is it compliance?
This talks about mitigation, not necessarily compliance.
Oh.
We don't get it from the highway department, which is doing the exact same thing. We don't get a parking fee for all the vehicles that go over there.
There's a big difference between the town municipal parking and someone who is in the form of business to earn an income from the parking spaces, there's a big difference.
We don't get anything across the street with all the sandbags, all the little lone star, all that stuff.
Did somebody get that at some point in time, or somebody waived the fee like they did the fee down at the?
This fee was after we came in.
Have we ever, have we ever enforced this fee structure?
Well, I know we waived a fee of about fourteen thousand dollars on the place across from the, from the police department. Wasn't there a hundred and six?
The way that you structured the, that fee was if traffic mitigation is required and the applicant isn't forthcoming with any offers to help with traffic problems in, you know, in the area, then you can impose that fee. That's the way it's written.
Is this going to have any mitigation?
So it's not, we can impose a fee, it's not one that is automatically inferred upon it?
Discretionary, I think it's going to be.
Right, right.
That's the one you want to go with?
Discretionary, I'm going to use discretion. I don't think they're doing anything to alter the traffic pattern after that we need to, you know, maybe have Millie up for a couple of days a week to get them out of here.
Just checking.
Peter.
I don't.
Excise. They're registered here.
Pardon?
They're registered here, they'll be an excise.
Well, where, so where are those vehicles registered? Probably Oklahoma.
No, they're going to have to be registered here. They're parked there, they don't have to, yeah, they are.
You think?
Well, I.
Where are they, where's this company out of?
I'm not sure. Well, this is their location now, they now, they now leave space in the building, so.
So you're going to drive down and check and see if they have Massachusetts plates on it? You'll do that?
We'll.
You will do that?
The Town of Littleton. Okay.
We're by the future, I think we're just kind of.
I'm going to move to halt, halt discussion on this and.
That's fine.
And move to approve.
Second.
There was a draft.
However, yeah, they have to abide by the viewing of.
So there was a vote to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Well, there are other things we're looking at, and there's a question about mitigation.
Well, we're going to talk mitigation, I don't think this is going to be.
That's what it talks about. So, I mean, it'd be nice to have it figured out, not just shoot for the heck of a spur of a moment. Crazy things get decided often, you don't understand.
I'm not shooting, I had my fun.
There's a draft decision in your package.
Yeah, I mean, there are a few things to consider.
Well, and let's make sure that the vehicles that are parked there overnight are registered in, registered in the Town of Littleton until you get the excise.
Is there a question on urgency of this? I guess that may be usually beneficial to most of us, rather than making some dumb decisions.
Would you say four?
Yeah, I mean, they're hopeful that, you know, I don't want to rush the board, I mean, you have, you have the time that you have on special permits.
Look, you may get a decision you don't really like to put in like that.
Right.
Might as well, you know, try to go where it works for everyone.
This is not a complicated decision.
I had as much fun as I could trying to make it complicated for a few.
No started by saying.
But now I'm out, I'm doubting, I'm out.
But Donald make it as complicated as possible as can be.
Well, you raised issues and, you know.
So what do you want, I have no problem with not having any fees levied upon them for parking spaces. Mark has made the suggestion that the vehicles are parked in town, will be registered in town in the state of Massachusetts in Littleton, correct? That is part of your stipulation. The other one is that the.
I'm just not sure that the commuter vehicles won't be.
The commuter, where they come from, it's just.
Right, we may come from many places.
Be quite honest with you, I'm not certain on the other either, but I, I don't.
That is, that is our, most vehicles are parked there overnight in the Town of Littleton.
It's the way it works with me, with my business.
It's registered in the Town of Littleton. If they overnight here, they have to be registered here, so it's just.
I don't know if that's a rule, but I'll go with that.
Sure is.
So it is where I work.
It is.
Let's go to the third thing.
James, wait a second.
I think the parking is that they park for over thirty days consistently, that is, they have to.
Yeah, it sounds. I'm pretty sure, like I said, all these middlesex stuff.
More probably, they have to more than thirty days, which is.
Yeah. We'll have our tax department. No started by saying.
My question, my adversary, mostly public gas, gas rap.
You're not having any gas tanks here, are you?
No.
And we'll refer to the O and M manual.
Yeah.
Right.
And water department will obviously be monitoring what the, are we having, monitoring what's already out?
Well, perhaps we just need to submit our issue here.
Talk to me, so we've done the O and M.
Right, and there maybe specify that it's not our department's deal. Traditionally, I think it's been the case.
Any other conditions?
What was that? On, on maintain, maintenance of the gas and oil traps and things like that, it's usually the water department, yeah, would monitor that or get it forced, or no?
Not usually. Actually, I would suggest that they come to the planning board and that way I can forward it to the building department, it can go in the building file, so if enforcement ever needs to be done, you know, we'll go back and check.
Good with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Does that mean you do on the annual report?
Good. Here we clean out of the track.
Yeah.
Document.
I'm good.
All right. Second.
All those conditions?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Your one.
Aye.
Are we closing?
You're closing, okay.
We're all good, next.
Aye.
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 Who made the motion?
Peter did.
Good.
And who seconded?
I don't know, I have a headache.
You did.
I seconded, all right.
Thank you.
You had a bad word.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Did you? No. It makes it seem that light out. Yeah.
Now we have, now we have three hundred King Street.
Three hundred King Street?
And it's the.
Looking.
So this is conformist or what?
This is a, it's like special.
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
What number is this?
Oh, yeah, we have to open and continue the definitive subdivision and open space for Anthony Farmer's Road, Logan and Kenya, that's by eight.
Okay.
Why do we have to do that?
See, because they're not ready.
We're blocking.
We got promised last time.
No, no. Do, we have to.
We're so good, we have extension.
I've got to see that guy in the corner.
I hate you.
Probably better off without him down there.
All right.
Good job.
Yeah.
And here. Oh, he's got the bike again. I know, he's got that camera right there.
Yes. Anyway, sorry.
Nobody that are here?
What, you have a sense of that information?
Millions of viewers at home.
So Mark will continue that until eight thirty on May eighth, Farmers Road State.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Still back.
That's fine, we all get it. Want me to reiterate for everybody that went to the bathroom while we were discussing that?
I had a vote and everything.
All right, moving on a little along, we have an eight-twenty site plan review at three hundred King Street, which is the playground area.
So as a way of introduction, my name is Eric Atkins from Green International. This is Danielle Spicer from Green International. We were hired by the Park and Rec Department to design improvements to the existing site at three hundred King Street, which includes renovations to the courts and new parking. And I'll turn it over to Danielle, and she can introduce the line and explain.
Good evening. So, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the site, but it's located right along King Street, oops, sorry, right along here, and under the existing conditions, and if you can't see this, I can blow it up to the original plan, but we have, we have an existing, there's a gravel parking area right here, there's actually two entrances into the site, and there's a, one basketball court here, and then two tennis courts in the back here that are not in, that are in pretty poor condition. So what we are proposing to do is, and I apologize, it's now, north is this way, what we're proposing to do is basically remove the existing courts that we have there, and we're going to design actually three new basketball courts that are now going to be north-south facing, which allows for better playing, so that you don't have the sun glare with regard to east and west. And we've actually designed this pedestrian pathway circulating around to allow people to access the courts on all areas and to kind of use it as a little.
Track.
Track, kind of, you know, walking path, and there's actually a path to kind of cut through here that you're able to do. We have a parking area with about forty-six spaces, and one thing we have done is with regard to the site, there originally were two entrances and exits into the site, and this existing driveway is pretty steep, and due to the hill that you've got kind of coming down here, it's not the best site visibility, so we've actually proposing to close this off and actually make this a full two-way entrance in, entrance out, so this is, you know, much, much better visibility grade-wise, you don't have the steep grade kind of coming down. This is all fully accessible two-way traffic around here. We've got site lighting for the parking only, there will be no lighting within the courts, so this will be only for, you know, daytime use here. We did actually already submit to the Conservation Commission a notice of intent, and we have received an order of conditions. And I think that's, so basically, there is stormwater mitigation that's designed throughout the site, this is a new development site, so we're meeting all ten standards, and there was a stormwater report that was submitted to the Conservation Commission showing the intent for how we're meeting all those standards. We've got, I already mentioned the site lighting with this, within this area, and that's, you know, pretty much straightforward, other questions?
Yes, at one point in time, there was a discussion about maybe not enough parking and, and maybe connecting with the Canada One large people to use that as an overflow parking, and at the same time, they would eliminate their driveway. Where did those discussions go?
We, we, there were some preliminary discussions, Dan, do you probably?
Yeah, I mean, there was some preliminary discussions early on with the Masons, but it really hasn't gone any further. We had CVC money to do this, and it didn't include that at all. There's an empty lot in between, and it's just a separate piece. Possibly later on, we can consider something like that.
And also on the empty lot, I think, gone back and forth with various ideas, but the idea of the long stare being reconstructed there had come up, and I think last time round, people have talked about it, it's come and gone various times.
We've talked about it, I mean, we're receptive to it, but that's a whole different item until later on. And they have delineated that there are no wetlands in that lot also.
Yes, we, when we looked at wetlands, we looked at the entire site, and actually, just to kind of bring you back here to the overall site, so this is the entire parcel back here, so there were wetlands that were delineated all around here, and we did have our wetland scientists look at this area to make sure if there were wetlands, we would, we would flag that. There are no wetlands.
Right, I, I.
Correct, yes.
I understand, and I guess one of my concerns is that, you know, there, it's also municipally-owned lot, and it's hard telling what's likely to shake out from that and what's likely to be there, but if someone used to park where they don't park, the area of Pride Park, at three hundred King Street, I don't know if that's an issue.
They won't park on King Street, there's no parking.
No, they can't park.
Yeah, they're not parking on. So what, so, you know, it's another municipal use going on at the same time, and like most cases, I like to see things sort of resolved before.
Well, we'd like to see it eventually, but we can't do that with CVC funding that we have.
What happened to Castle and the Clots? Weren't they over there?
It's still there.
Oh, the playground, yeah, so the playground is all right here, so basically, our limited
work is right up to the existing playground.
So you're taking tennis courts and put basketball courts in?
Yeah, so there's, there were, one existing basketball and two existing tennis courts, those are all going to be removed, there'll be three basketball courts.
And we decided that we needed more basketball courts.
I guess the interest in the town is that there's a lot more interest for basketball teams and versus tennis.
Might be to start playing basketball now?
I would, I'm probably gonna start up again, I know there are three courts, I'm walking distance from my house.
So there is, is there enough parking, Eric, according to?
This, this exceeds, we, we've maxed out, I think Danielle mentioned this, forty-six spaces in this lot, which exceeds what we would typically expect to see or need for. It's, ITE doesn't have a lot of studies on determining the amount of parking spaces required for this type of use. Um, we estimated probably about thirty to thirty-six spaces. Uh, we were able to provide forty-six with some maybe accessible spaces as well. One thing I want to note is the connection with Masonic Lodge, we did do the survey through that area and the wetland elimination do, to basically look at that to see if anything would keep that from happening. And we've made our design such that if in the future funds do become available and an agreement is able to be made uh, with the Masons and, um, and the Park and Rec in the town of Littleton, the driveway could be added at a future time.
They have terrible, they have a.
It's horrendous coming up that driveway.
Should there's another lot?
Which would connect in the back?
It would connect off the side, so the Masonic Lodge is over here, the town of Littleton owns this lot right here. It's a different entity in the town and the Masonic would come up through this area here and then tie into the parking lot and then.
Then that's actually, then.
But that lot right there, the one you're showing me, that one is Masonic?
This is Masonic, this is empty, this is an empty lot.
That's the town of Littleton's lot, it's a different town entity.
It's, it's not, no, there is a grade change, there is a grade change.
Grade change there.
So that would need to be looked into, I mean, with regard to wetlands, we're okay there, but there is a grade change that would need to be looked into of how are you going to, um, get a driveway down from here, because this is a lot higher.
And what if we had the separate entrance for that and just made that a progress space with stairs going up to the other lot? If it gets in the plan, if there's not enough, but I like what you've done, I'm all set.
Yeah, I'm done.
You know, I'm done, let's go.
Who are we gonna have?
Wait, 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 hold on. Yeah, you mentioned different at these control things, I mean, it's worth knowing this, especially if talking about future plans and so on and so. This is park correct, I got that, 300 King Street, who owns the?
This one?
Lot, yes. Under whose controls?
That's the Boris Selectman.
The middle.
It's the Boris Selectman. It's the Boris Selectman right now.
Okay, and there's sort of unknown whether Long Star is gonna go there or not, but if that won't impact this. Okay, I've heard the.
It won't impact the, the whole.
Oh, okay.
Project at all.
Okay.
This was designed to be basically self-contained.
No, I, I, I get that, I understand that.
But not preclude the option of having a driveway if that plan falls into place.
So it's a driveway, then also perhaps lots, that's all compatible.
And I make a motion?
We're all.
Do whatever we gotta do to.
Well, and have you dealt with the comments from the light department? They have just been dealing with others.
We're gonna be speaking with Kevin probably in the next week or so to discuss his comments about the fountain in the underwater meter.
Okay. Yep.
So we can't send it out to anybody because you're a consultant, right?
We'll be happy to hear your.
Make okay with the entrance and exit?
Full service.
Yes. Both, both the fire department and the police department, I believe, have reviewed the place.
I'll entertain the most.
Well, are there any other issues we should be doing?
I've asked a question. John, I've asked a question, they were answering my question.
What's your question, ask you?
I've asked a question and they were answering my question, could you wait just one minute?
Okay, you keep on shooting wherever you want to, even, go ahead, answer it.
Both, both the fire department and the police department have reviewed, um, the removal of this entrance and the widening of this entrance to be a full two-way access entrance and.
I believe Chief Kelly was in support of the elimination of that entrance.
They have been.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm a site.
Excellent, that's both my.
Yes, yes.
Did a great job answering, I'm, I'm all set, I think.
Okay, are there any other issues of that nature or have we?
Just, just the two, um, the two comments from the electrical department and the water department and we're gonna be coordinating with them to make sure, um, we've got the appropriate removal of the existing stuff that we need to and, um, the water line.
Jim, Jim has some comments that we talked about just before this hearing and we're also gonna look at addressing as well.
Great, thank you.
Good.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing and who decides.
So move.
As presented, so move.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Have a good night.
Endly.
November eight forty. Gray road. Site plan. New England. I guess.
Eric, this is your.
My homework here.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here for this?
And, yeah.
I'll take over this next week.
Yep, and actually, this one is the site plan, the new site plan for the.
This is nothing more than.
He's trying to play nice with one of our residents. You know, I can't referee, hand each other.
Okay, well, do one or the other.
Probably change.
Control.
Alright, here we go, where was site plan on you from the New England? Okay, it's temple.
Before I forget, your thumb drive is there. Thanks. So we found a really easy way to submit electronic files, we brought thumb drive along with all of this application stuff.
Okay, why don't you give us an overview of what, what was we having?
Sure.
Approximate location, so people in town can have an orientation here.
Absolutely, um, my name is Ian Rubin, I'm with Mark Ian Rubin from Acton and we're here to present tonight, uh, this temple we're proposing. It's the Sherdy Si, Parivon, New England Sherdy Si, Parivon Temple, it's actually in Groton. And we're right on the town line, here's, here's, here's the town line right here. So the, the property, um, that's in Littleton, there's all this open space right here and this little access area right there. So, just as an overview, this is a Vonal Pool right here and there's wetlands down here in, uh, in Littleton. Uh, actually, yeah, it comes through to Littleton to Ernie's Drive, um, it connects up with the drains in Ernie's Drive. The driveway is coming up like this and does a loop around. This is all, um, open space with what we call ornamental gazebo's, which are really, uh, part of their, uh, religious, um, places that they can worship and so on. This is the temple, this temple is designed to have a maximum occupancy of five hundred people. Um, and then there's the auditorium over here and down here is a, um, uh, residence for the priests. There are four two-bedroom units right there. All the, the parking that you see are pervious paving and just the driveway is standard drainage with manholes and catch basins. They're designed to go to a Vonal Pool down here, uh, Vonal Pool, a, a retention pond over here, over here and down at the entrance here. Water is still an issue, they're still trying to resolve water, um, they would have very much liked to have got water from Littleton, but somehow Groton didn't like that. So, uh, we tried, tried putting in a communal well, it really doesn't work. Um, so at this point, there are actually three alternatives for, for water, one from Monarch Drive, Monarch Way, Monarch Path. Um, there's another alternative down this way, uh, I've forgotten what that is, it, it actually goes down to Bayberry Road or all the way along Boston Road, but if we come Boston, that's like three thousand feet away to tie into water, those are a little closer. Of course, the closest would be Littleton, but that's a no-no. Um, right now, there's a, there's an existing house on this lot, that house will be torn down.
That's that little one-story kind of flat rock, flat house right on the.
Yes. Right on the Littleton-Groton line, there's a little parking space in front of it, it has a septic, it has a well, it has a shed in the backyard. All that's gonna be taken away, left with just the ex, excess driveway and this, this little, uh, retention point right there.
Where are the power lines in relationship to that?
There are power lines on the street, no, the, the big ones.
Oh, and near there, I think. Transmission.
Down here.
No, they're down at the railroad tracks.
Down, down by the.
Down muller.
Down by the grove. Question for you is how much of the land that you're purchasing is actually in Littleton? Only that small corner where the house lots are?
Yeah, it's right there and in this portion here.
Alright, that's in Littleton and that little portion over there.
The exact acreage is two point nine eight acre.
It's in Littleton and, and as far as you're asking us, it's all about a hundred and fifty feet of it off of one nineteen Boston Road into it.
Yeah, uh, this amount of frontage here is, well, it's not gonna be quite a hundred and fifty, that'll be may, maybe, uh, seventy feet more or less of frontage.
But so water, there's no problem getting Littleton water to Littleton property, correct?
No problem. However, Groton doesn't want us to do that and Groton has contacted Littleton Water Department to say, don't give them water.
I don't think they have the right to do that.
Have water to give you?
If, if I had, you have, I mean, they hear what you're saying now, they are gonna really try hard to get Groton, give them Littleton water. Why is not this for us, I mean, they want Littleton water, they have, they have front entrance for it, they can get.
They've got, you know, I mean, there's water on their property, it's continuous.
There's a, there's a, a well there right now, water is down at Jane's.
Jane's.
Yeah, there's water, like, it's seven hundred feet away. You guys want to put water in, that's up to you, we don't have.
That doesn't matter to us, I was just thinking, it's kind of rude of them, but I don't have any problems with what they're asking for this opening, you guys?
Which way does, I, I got a question.
Please, go ahead.
Which way does the water on that site shed, does it shed towards Littleton or towards the back?
Okay.
Towards the natural.
I'll explain to you the whole, uh, setup of water, of runoff you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, there are four design points. One is, there's a catch basin right there. So some of this water right now, um, from, from this area.
Yep.
Would come down like this, down to that catch basin, including some of this area right here.
So that won't change.
That will not change. That's number one. Number two, um, there's water coming down this way, running across the lane off to Ernie's Drive.
Yep.
Three is down to the wetlands and the majority of it goes to the Vonal Pool.
And, uh, will you be, you know, I, the whole site is in Groton, but will you be capturing that water and, and treating it? Because you're right near our.
We are, yeah, okay, we, we are designing the runoff to no increase in peak, uh, peak discharge or volume. Um, so we are meeting both of those.
Will you?
There, there might be a slight bit of excess volume here, but a very small amount, yeah.
Do you have, you must have catch basins on site?
Yes, catch, the, the last two catch basins are over about there that we can actually catch and then drain to here. So the rest of this is actually running down.
Will they have oil and water separated in?
Uh, we have everything on site except for this little bit of runoff here that goes to a catch basin. So whatever the catch basin provides is, 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 that's the only treatment of that runoff.
So, um, the catch basin, will they have a oil, water separated in?
They will, uh.
All of them?
Absolutely, on site they will, yes.
Okay, so that, should we help?
The, um, Groton is in the process of reviewing this right now, um, the planning board, um, Stormwater Committee and Conservation Commission, um, they've all met at least once.
Right, we've, we've met, yeah, several times over and actually the design you see here is not the final design because, uh, with Conservation, they didn't want us to go anywhere in the buffer, you can see the buffer right here, so we've just encroached on it, so made some changes to get entirely out of the buffer, except for this small portion here and they, they've accepted that we don't have an alternative to this. What kind of buffer do you have for the houses that are already there? Are you proposing? We have a minimum fifty-foot buffer all the way around the, the property on all sides. I mean, the worst is, is right here, which is fifty feet. When you say fifty, is it, are there, is there vegetation there now, are there trees? Yes, it's all very heavily wooded, we've met with all their butters on site, uh, showing them what we're doing. They've asked us to, to provide more than fifty feet there and I have another plan where I can show you, I've actually given them more than fifty. Well, the open space and all that open space there that you're not gonna touch, is that all very left in its natural state? Left in its natural state, correct. That's all wooded. All wooded, yeah. Alright, so there's more than a fifty-foot buffer? Uh, there's much more, I'm just saying right down there, which is.
Who's that resident?
Here's the lot line.
What resident is that?
This, these are Ernie's Drive.
Right, that one, yes, that one, the one.
This, uh, this is Stephen Gentile.
And the next one?
Is, uh, Russ Arena. And we've met both with Stephen Gentile and Russ Arena, because they were somewhat the most concerned. What about the ones down on the front, the ones right next to the driveway?
That's, that's us.
What kind of buffer are you gonna have over there?
And there's, there's like no buffer there.
No, the road, the road is, is right against the property line, we actually don't have an alternative only because it's the only access to the site and to keep out of the buffer.
Because of grounds.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, the, the, first of all, to keep all impervious surface out of the buffer.
Yeah.
We've kind of, we're even gonna have to put a little retaining wall right there.
But you got, you, you talked about impervious, um, permeable pavers though.
Right, on, on site, not on the, not on the driveway. It's, it's impractical to do pervious paving on, on a. You gotta give them some sort of buffer, because you're gonna have five hundred cars coming out of there. Uh, no, not five hundred cars. You have service for five hundred people, right? Five hundred people and on average, by, by Groton standards, it's three persons per car. And, and, and I'll give you an overall as to how they operate here. That, really, they only have one, um, night a week when they are gonna have, uh, a full congregation and that is gonna be on the Thursday night and they really start at about six-thirty. Service is officially, um, fully occupied at about eight o'clock. So they'll have people coming in, it, it's not like, um, everybody has to be there at one time, it's just by eight o'clock, ready the service starts, but people come in a lot sooner than that and it'll go on till about ten o'clock. So, and it'll, people will start moving, they also provide food after the service, so there is a dining room, but that dining room will not, is not occupied during the service. But that's still, you're shoehorning a driveway in a residential area and you're gonna have a, a fair amount of traffic in there. On, on one night a week, yes.
You can put some abracadis or something, it would stay.
My point is, you, you're doing something down on the back of the residents that have down on Ernie's Drive, you need to do something in the entranceway there.
Is there, is there an issue with putting, say, providing something like that?
That's, could very well, I just wanna look at the, the landscape, maybe, see. This is like. Yeah, so I'm sure you, I mean, if you wanna, I don't know, show me right here. This is what they're proposing to do right here and they're. Oh, there is some green. Yeah.
And what is it, what, what's gonna be planted there? Yeah, it should be key.
Yeah. Hey, do you wanna see this?
Yeah, this is landscape.
It's your house right here.
And it's right up there, I mean, there's really.
JCC?
That's, that's just a few feet, that's not that much.
These are.
PC.
Well, this, this retaining wall, yeah, uh, what they've got here is AVs, I don't know. I, I'll have to, I can find out.
Well, but, give me a clue, it's.
AVs, con, con color.
Um, okay, it's, uh, maybe a blue spruce, uh, which is straight and would have, uh, sloping, you know, so. So we, we need something that provides log, providing might do it, that might do it, uh, blue spruce is much better, which kind is, it's, uh, branches down below, it's a self-pruning, you want something.
No. We need, we need this, I mean, this is, see, he has the, he has the buffer, you see that? Exactly, I understand out of the buffer.
But it's really, I mean, this, you're.
You're right on their lot line.
You have a little bit of planning, but you're really on our, our line.
Here's your AVs con color, it's a, it's a spruce.
Right, that's what I said, it's con colors, spruce, you decided to sell for Christmas trees, yeah.
But it's fault and these, these are.
It's a little blue spruce.
I mean, you're really right on their lot line, you know, you're right on there. And it's not like you're putting another house in there, this is.
And which means we'll probably lose some trees and stuff on our lot line, if you're, if you're digging in here, you're gonna be.
Right, they're gonna, they're gonna have to clear up what's there and replace them with what you see.
Right, but we're gonna end up losing a bunch of trees down on ours, because if you're digging up this, you're gonna be probably killing some of the roots from those trees.
If there are any trees damaged on your property, there's, you know, that, that I'm gonna have to replace them.
Yeah, it can be guaranteed.
Right, I mean, absolutely, I mean, I mean, the, the, the main problem is we, we had to get out of the buffer. I mean, I wouldn't have put this retaining wall if it wasn't.
I mean, I wouldn't have put this retaining wall if it wasn't for the fact that they want to, no, no need for the services in the buffer. This is a Vernal Pool and.
Well, it's actually the state's largest Vernal Pool. One time, Contra Conservation Commission, Longwood, Volta Conservation Commission, tried to get grant money to protect it, and that did not come through. But it's a very sensitive area. That's why you're being pushed out. I know the history. I'm sorry, Groton, sorry, it was Groton, Littleton, and there's law of activity. It was the previous project here that went away, this came in.
Well, let me just say, the other project hasn't gone away. The other project is still, I mean, they've had an extension on their order conditions, and they can still build. But they have, this is what they're proposing, they have under agreement with Matt Field, who.
Matt Bob?
Yes.
Right.
And Matt Bob has all his permits in hand at this point, and he's still good for another two years.
He's still valid. And, you know, they tried to do various things with it. My question was also here, and yeah, more recently you mentioned this. One of my concerns is that if you have no other choice here, and it's hard pavement and so on, what are you doing to deal with the drainage, to protect it from there? But obviously, your concern is a concern too. It's a very narrow corridor, so what are you doing to mitigate that? I mean, here, you're trying to some vegetation, mitigate it. What are you trying to do to not impact that sensitive area?
Why don't you meet with the people that live here, the residents right there, and come up with a plan, maybe even if you have to go into their property, if it's going to benefit you to come up with a better planting than just a bunch of trees. And come back to us with that, even if it has to be on their property, as long as they're in agreement with that.
Would you be opposed to that?
I'm just trying to give you a little more buffer.
I mean, be like putting a tree on your property to benefit, but all depends upon the details.
We can always put more screening on there and top it. But no, why don't you work that out?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'd be willing to talk.
Yes, absolutely.
I would say, to hear what you want to propose.
I'd like to see a better screening there. I'm fine with everything else, as far as that goes.
I mean, that's a concern, but I would like to know also what you're doing to make sure there's no drainage off it. Because I'm sure that's come up in Groton.
Well, absolutely. I mean, let me tell you, this runoff, and it's only in fact up to, just this little portion right here, actually continues down to this catch basin right there, as it always has.
Do you have derm on that road?
There's a derm, yes.
So that's what cat, cat.
We'll catch, we'll catch that in depth to this catch basin.
Can we continue this to the 8th mile and?
I like the project, I think it's a terrific project.
So what you're saying, the derm catches it and flows down?
All of this is coming this way, and it's fully treated.
With infiltration here.
Right.
I have to say, it really does pool up around here, the catch basin here. I mean, there's, I'm just pointing it out.
That's existing, because I know the next property.
It's the street that they're talking about pooling on?
Just in truth.
Highway department.
Jerry, you look this there?
119.
Yeah, Massachusetts.
Yeah, the problem is, when they redid the road, they set this thing about two inches higher in my driveway, so this becomes a skating rink.
But you live on this interstate.
No, it's a house that he has, a rental home.
We can't do much with that, but why don't we continue it till the?
I think this is a great use for that property.
Okay. I can tell you, many of their butters, 7:45.
Why don't you work this particular butler, come up with a solution to give her a little more buffering?
Absolutely. If you can give me a phone number, I'll call you and set up an appointment.
And we'll continue this till the 8th, if that's okay.
Jerry, you okay with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
The only question I've got is, that road is, you take your wife in your hands.
Oh, well, that's Massachusetts.
I know. I've been onto the side, and I've seen, I know exactly what you're saying. I mean, there's definitely pooling of water here, and, you know, I'm not sure. This has to pull up to get the water to that catch basin.
So being a state road is really up to the state to decide how to deal with the grading there?
Other than that, I think it's a greatness for that site. It'll be, it's a, well, it can happen.
We're already reducing the people off from here down to there, so.
There's going to be a lot of blasting, like, I don't know what you. This grades up here quite a bit, so this all in here, this is all going to be blasted. So I mean, that's a huge concern, because it's going to affect, because all of us get, I get, we get well water, and I got some of these others get well water, so I mean, how is that going to work?
The state regulates that.
So your well water often will, there's a regulation that develops within a certain distance of it, or a health regulation.
Right, that's. Well, if you can get the, if you can get the, if you can get the water from Littleton and bring it across there, then they could tie it to town water, too, right? Well, I mean, you should probably.
That's what they want.
Well, then, why don't you just do it? Groton can't tell you where you're getting water from.
So can we get water from?
Littleton, you're in. I think you need to talk to the water department.
We're not attorneys, so let's just leave it at that, and.
Yeah, I have a question. Right. So what is Groton's concern?
What difference does it make to us?
Groton has a water problem themselves. There's all those houses in that neighborhood that, I mean, Paul is getting water, and they'd so much like us to get water from Bayberry all the way around, which is 3,000 feet away.
So you pay for the pipes?
And pay, and that's going to cost like $700,000.
Right, so, yeah, that seems rather strange.
Yeah, but then there are other shortcuts we can possibly take coming from Monarch Path, and that might be the route we end up going. But obviously, we have to pay them a lot of money anyway to do that. So the best route would still be Littleton, but.
What is not our decision, but I don't think.
We don't have a problem if you get the water from. Why don't we continue this till May 8? You'll meet with the neighbors or whoever.
Absolutely.
And that'll give Groton the chance to finish the peer review on it.
Right, and that'll give us time when we can.
Right, and actually, I do have another plan, and I have kind of changed things, but obviously, that's not in your interest at all at this point in space, and that's all in Groton.
Right, we just want that open space preserved and a little buffer for the residents.
And a little buffer, and actually, if you can work on their property, so it's there.
Okay, great.
We'll talk.
Okay, thank you.
Creative solution that works well.
Would you like to copy him for you?
I have a small.
All right, you have a small, okay. Okay, well, we'll see you May 8. Thank you. 7:30? Okay, thank you.
Have you been to the meeting?
What?
A little bit before May 8?
Uh, no, we don't have a meeting until May 8, because of town elections, we have town elections. Town meeting.
Sorry.
This is May 7:30, right?
Yes, thank you.
I think we're almost there.
Okay, so are we all done?
That's the only project.
Okay, so we have a little bit of board business.
If the sheds at all.
Town meeting.
Right, actually, first, Macintosh Lane, they're not coming in tonight.
Oh, yeah, let's talk about that.
I'm working with them, I'm sending the bond, and they came with a proposal, Green's going to review it.
Okay, we need to talk about that. Now, Macintosh Lane is the 22 lots?
21.
21 lots that are part of the 40B. Now, they're behind the 40B. They're going to be tied into a sewer treatment plant that hasn't even been built yet.
And they're going to be funding it.
And they're going to be funding it, and it's not built yet. And people, they're already talking about starting to build these houses and everything else. And so people are going to be buying these houses, expect them to move in, and they're not going to be able to live there, there's no sewer treatment plant. Now, everyone said, oh, it's not a big deal, because Roland's not going to issue a building, an occupancy permit. But I think we need to do more than that.
Yeah, the sewer needs to be worn.
I think we need to propel the developer to.
Build it first?
Get the sewer treatment going first, so I think we should put a high bond on it, because there's no sewer treatment plant on it. He's going to have to put all the infrastructure in there, in the road anyway.
Well, who are we protecting? Are we protecting the potential homeowners?
Homes, yeah.
Or are we protecting the town against?
Well, yeah, let's face it, if you bought that house and nobody told you that, oh gee, I can't move in yet because I don't have a septic system, we're going to look like idiots.
Roland can't issue building permits.
Yes, he can. Yes, he can.
Yeah, I have a question about the development, that's already approved, and we were sort of forced into that, but it's approved, so we can't condition it, but so the situation has changed.
It's a unique situation.
Yeah, right. It's an awkward situation.
Will someone explain to me how Roland can issue a permit, a building permit, a full building permit, without a source for, without a sign off from the Board of Health?
He will get the sign off from the Board of Health. He has no legal authority withhold, to withhold issuing the building, withhold the building permit.
But how can the Board of Health sign off on something that's not constructed yet?
An occupancy permit, until it's functional.
Oh, well, all right.
And I don't think that's strong enough, because it could take years. So these people are going to plop their money down, they're going to get a house, and then all of a sudden, they're going to say, oh, you can't move in.
It just, you know, what is it, what's it?
Caliad emptor?
But how can we?
To buy everywhere? We've got to do more than that.
And there needs to be something that needs to be aware to them when they go to buy these places.
Supposedly it is, but still.
But it can.
What I'm trying to say is, I think we need to put a bond amount high enough, because the.
To protect the fact that they're going to, when they go under, and we're going to have to put in.
We need to talk to town council, see if we can.
That's a town council.
Because he's bonding the infrastructure to go to the sewer treatment plant, right? Not just the roadway and everything else, correct?
I will ask that question.
I'm saying, let's tell them we want a million-dollar bond.
A billion dollar going to build sewer treatment?
But at least make it so it's faster, it's going to go faster. But where it is right now, there is no hurry to, they're taking people's money, and they're no hurry to build a sewer treatment plant. So we make, and they're coming in to bond it as quick as possible, so they get lot releases.
So maybe the bond could be either for the cost of bill, but, and then, of course, that's off-site, so maybe the bond should be high enough that it'd be put on-site, some sewer treatment facility.
There's no place for it.
Well, I mean, they could do their own.
I'm just saying.
No, that's what we want to avoid, you don't want to avoid them having to put in a tight tank for two years or whatever until the treatment plant is ready.
But if you think of the cost, I mean, it's hard holding them to a cost for a bond for something that's off-site.
I will ask council.
No, we can't though, because the infrastructure is going to have to go through the roads and everything else. We're bonding it up. Let's just say a million bucks.
Well, let's go to town.
Let's let town council talk, but I think we need to.
Look at the options. Yeah, no, I agree, okay.
All right, so that, now let's, okay, so we're all in agreement with that. We'll talk to Chris about.
No, we're not. Because I want to make sure, before we make any, go down any path, that it's, that we're not going to get ourselves sued.
That's why we're going to talk to town council.
So that.
We're going to town council.
Might pick out the options.
Yeah, the advice from town council.
Right, bonding is one option.
Yeah, I'm not going to approve anything that's going to get us framed in litigation.
Well, you don't have a vote in front of you.
Right, we just want to find out from town council.
We're looking for solutions.
James.
They're also proposing to only build half the road and put a turnaround halfway. No.
So that's changing it.
No, that's changed, no.
And that's in our control.
Actually, that's phasing it.
Well, and they're also proposing not to put any pavement down either, right?
And that's an issue when you bond it, when you release the lots.
That's why I'm.
That's always up to the developer. And most of them, once they see the amount that the bond is going to be, it's so high for the town to have to finish that work, that they go ahead and do work.
We need to see some serious numbers before we go to plan.
So council will come back with recommendations on a bond or some alternative, based on the different options that these people have. So for instance, if they're only going to build half the project, then there's this.
Well, we have the proposal from the developer of a bond amount that's being reviewed by town departments and by Green. We noticed that it doesn't include prevailing wages, so that's going to have to be bumped up quite a bit. The question is, how much, can we include the off-site infrastructure amounts in that bond? And where does town council weigh in on building half the road with a temporary turnaround, and then doing the second half at a later date?
Okay.
So we'll get those answers for the May 8 meeting. Next, town meeting. I will not be here for town meeting, I will be in Paris in vacation. I know.
What's his name?
Paris. I'm kidding. You're going to do your bylaw, right?
I'll do that one, yes. And what's the other one, the next one?
The medical marijuana, who wants to tackle that?
I'd be, isn't sir wanting to, but I have enough knowledge of it, I'd like to do that.
And whatever problems, go on, do the medical marijuana.
No, I mean, if you want to do that, that's fine with me, it doesn't make any difference.
Look, it's, I'll do whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, that's my approval.
You've got to present it. I mean, you've got to make sure that everybody understands, this is, not supporting it, we have to do something, unless it's going to be everywhere.
There's a law, we chose, yeah, right, and it's the consequences.
You guys might do that, I'll be in Paris.
Okay.
Right, and then the third one is the flood insurance rate maps.
Yeah, that's a no choice. Yeah, I'll do the medical marijuana and the flood insurance if you want.
Sure.
I'll be glad.
Well, why don't we split up?
You can both do it.
It doesn't make any difference.
We'll stand. Breathe as digest.
We're almost done.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear you. What were you saying?
Both do it together.
Now, you could do the medical marijuana. That's what Andy said already.
Well, I said, I have some knowledge, background knowledge of it, so that might be helpful.
You have some authority? You're up for election, you're up for election next year, right?
All right.
No.
Let's go.
This has nothing to do about elections, it's a matter of what needs to be done.
Anything else, Warren? Did we miss anything?
The only, the other thing I had given you was just a draft of application, please, checklist and procedures for RMDs. Take a look through them, it was the last thing in your package. Take a look through them, I wanted to give them to you early, so you had an idea of what direction I was headed with those, and we'll vote on adopting those.
Where is this RMD fee?
It's in the packet. But it's also the application, Joe. The question I had was that, looking at what other towns have done and so on, they often have a concern about having accessible for emergency rescue, because of the clinic, and things can happen. Also have the accessible to the police, because everything's dealt with in cash, has a lot of money passing, and also having it sort of visible, because, yeah.
Well, I was with Bay Hall bylaw as written now, I was proposed, and you're going to go with any changes.
Right, and the third thing was about building inspector, being aware of what's happening in case they do something strange. And I didn't know in the checkoff list if there's any place that we have anything for police approving it for safety, or for safety concerns, or whatever. Yeah, there are different categories, but I was wondering if that would make sense, having a checkoff that someone else does that work, but that be part of the special permit.
Okay, what I have, I went by the existing bylaw, the way it's written. We say that copies of the application go to all these different departments, including the police department. And then I would do the usual ask for comments back to you on all of those.
Right, and I just know those are some of the concerns. But, yeah, it's not our purview really, except for general safety or whatever. Okay, that was the only question I had. Go ahead.
We have to close the meeting.
Don't move. Second? Donald David?
I'll second ask him. We'll see, everybody, and May 3. Now, thank you very much, Merritt, for sending this information along. We got it stumped on, I think he'll probably know.